Everyone, we'll get started with the meeting as soon as we do the flag salute. If you'd please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will call the meeting to order. And with regard to the agenda, members of the council, the city attorney has asked that item number 10, the proposed executive session, be taken off tonight's agenda. And my understanding is that his intent would be to ask us to put it back on in August. So unless there's, if you object, that's fine. We can go to the executive session, but we're just going to look at each other. Other than that, any issues with the, with the agenda? Seeing none, I move the agenda to be approved. Somebody second that?
I second that.
On paper, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. With regard to the consent agenda, anyone have questions with regard, or comments with regard to the minutes from July 1st? Anyone have any questions with regard to any of the warrants that are listed for payment? Okay. In that case, can I have a motion to approve the three items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. With regard to public comment for matters on tonight's agenda, we don't, there aren't a lot of things that we'll be taking action on tonight. We will probably make a decision on whether or not to make, list the, whether or not we're going to go over the revenue neutral rate with regard to our budget this year. The recommendation is that we do indicate that we're going to go over it because that doesn't bind us. And when we get clearly through our budget, we can always decide not to do that. But we want to keep that option open. We're not taking action on the mobile food vendor ordinance, but last meeting, I went ahead and let folks that wish to comment on that do so, so that the council would have the benefit of comments of that information when discussing this. So really, those are the items that would be open for comment. So if anyone wishes to make a public comment, food vendor or otherwise? Well, I say or otherwise, it has to be with regard to something on the agenda. Just go ahead and state your name and make your comments.
Ruth Herbl. And my comment is on the food vendor ordinance. And I just want to bring a couple of things to your attention. I did a little research and I found on this information on the Kansas Justice Institute, which is a nonprofit law firm dedicated to fighting against government regulations that interferes with your right to earn an honest living. And this particular item is on food truck and mobile businesses. The right to earn an honest living. Has the government made it harder for you to do business? Have your rights been violated? Running a small business is tough, even more challenging when the government puts unreasonable, unfair, and unnecessary roadblocks in your way. Cities around Kansas make it excruciating difficult for food trucks and other mobile vendors to earn an honest living. The permitting fees alone are a significant challenge for food truck owners. Fees considered unreasonable and excessive range from $80 to $600. Making matters worse, municipalities often restrict where the vendors can set up shop. They won't let food trucks fairly compete against restaurants. Kansas Justice, excuse me, Kansas Justice Institute considers competition restrictions, which is unreasonable and arbitrary, are the distance, which range from 50 to 150 feet. Why this matters? Food truck owners and other mobile businesses have a constitutional right to earn an honest living, free from unreasonable government regulations. The government shouldn't put their thumb down on the scale to protect restaurants in competition. Economical protectionism isn't constitutional. Kansans have a fundamental and natural right to earn honest living, free from unreasonable and arbitrary government regulations. They have the right to be treated equally under the law, meaning cities can't prohibit food trucks in areas where it would allow similar restaurants unless there is a good reason to do so. Cities don't prevent barbershops from competing with hair salons or keep one pharmacy away from the other, and they shouldn't do this for food trucks either. And I have a couple of opinions or facts that I would like you to consider. And on the ordinance, in section one, definitions on the pending ordinance, in item two, it says, "Any event the city organizes or assists in organizing where the city has approved vending by specific mobile food vendors at that event." This would be a case of picking and choosing who could participate in the event. This could be considered protectionism, which, and this item conflicts with what's in section five, which states ordinances will be suspended during city-approved events. So how can the city approve specific food vendors for something that they are organizing or helping to organize? Section two, operating, or operating regulations and requirements. Number one, movement required. Mobile food units are prohibited from remaining in a single vending location for more than 10 hours out of 25, or 24 period, during which vendors from the unit occurs in such a location. This would hurt our vendors in Marion that have permanent locations, like that one place in the shaved ice trailer behind the flower shop. This would make them move their units. And I hope you reconsider that and do away with that restriction completely.
You're way over your time.
Could I just?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have a half a page.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Distance from restaurants. No mobile food vendors may vend on public or private property within 150-foot radius from a brick-and-mortar restaurant during restaurants posted hours unless a mobile food truck has written permission. Restriction of distance would be considered competition restrictions and is unconstitutional, and it would not stand up in court if challenged. And then I just have a few other questions. It says, "Why are fees, time limits, and required information to apply for permit not included in this ordinance? This would save the food truck owners multiple trips to the city hall to purchase permits if they know ahead of time what was needed in order to secure a permit." Ordinance sets codes, and a code enforcement, and code enforces ordinance. In order to establish or change codes, it needs to be done by ordinance. So why pass more than one ordinance to set the terms for the permit for the food trucks? I realize the fees can be changed by resolutions, but first, they need to be set, and these fees are not something that would change regularly. The regulations needs to be set by ordinances. By not including this type of information in this ordinance that is establishing a food truck permit, it would double the expense of publicizing another ordinance to amend the existing ordinance to add the regulations. Thank you. And I also say, would like to say you could check with City Code Financial at Wichita, who originally set up our codes, if you have any questions on setting up the codes and how they can be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just.
Do you have 30 minutes? Is that what you say?
You're supposed to have three minutes, but clearly I'm not doing a good job enforcing that, so.
My name is Brent Miles, and I'm here speaking on the food truck. As you all know, my wife and I own the property where the alleged food truck has been. And I guess I want to start off, kind of spoke with a couple of you mayor powers, and we got a quick overview of how this came about, so that that's on record and everybody understands. But when this started, Ms. Vaeos, I was aware that she was wanting to come to town. I think we need more food options, restaurants, whatever, in town. I reached out to her and told her that we had a spot. And when that happened, she asked what day? We picked Sunday. Why did we pick Sunday? Taco's closed. Everybody else is pretty much closed. She was here the first Sunday, did really well, came back the second Sunday, did again really well during, came to my attention during that second Sunday. Taco ended up calling mayor at home, was going kind of pretty upset about it, and anyway, that kind of proceeded from there. So at that time, I did not know that, and she wanted to come back for another day, said she was doing really well. We picked Monday. Why did we pick Monday? He's closed, everybody else again is pretty well closed. So she was here, well, then on that Monday, I got a call while she was open, I was up there, I got a call from the health inspector saying she didn't have a food license. There was an anonymous call that came in, which was bogus, and food inspector calls back, she said, "I know who she is, she does have one." I said, "I know, it's posted on her window." So at that point, yes, I'm kind of ticked off about it. I'm like, "She wanted to come another day?" I said, "I don't care now, come whenever you want." So that's how she ended up coming on Wednesday. That Wednesday, she was here, there was probably a dozen, 15 people lined up waiting on food, ordering food, and Zach, another officer, come up, and I thought, made the comment, "Are you guys getting food?" And he's like, "No, just coming." We got an anonymous call that she's parked on the sidewalk, which we can pretty much guess where all that's coming from. But anyway, this has escalated, as you obviously know, and has gotten into, almost to the point of, I feel like harassment from him. He's standing out there taking pictures, and about every time she's there, contacting customers, you know, and again, that's outside of your guys' wheelhouse, but that's what's going on. And I feel like, you know, I like Taco. I mean, I like his food place, I think it's a unique establishment. My wife and I attend there, or did, we're banned from there right now, but our whole intent was to bring something more to Marion. And I think we have a lot of other options. That has happened, and you know, and there was comments made in a couple of other meetings, and I apologize, I was not able to be here for those. But you know, one gentleman made the comment that, you know, "I'm the only guy," or "We're the only people profiting from this deal." Well, first of all, as a landlord, when you own property, I don't think it really matters whether I charge $20 or $1,000. If me and the tenant agree, it's free enterprise. But that being said, the whole intent behind Ms. Vaeos is she wants a permanent location. And so we've been working on trying to find her a two-bedroom house to rent and move here, set up an establishment, but she's getting so much harassment, she's thinking about pulling out. And I hope that doesn't happen. That's all I'm going to say about that. The other thing I'm going to address is just so you guys, and you may all be aware of it, but when we moved to town five years ago, our intent is to make Marion better. I mean, that's what we love, we love the community, and we start off with my wife's salon out on the highway. Since then, we've moved downtown, we've bought a couple of buildings, bought HRK. And that whole mix of everything, I mean, we've got, what, five apartments, basically we brought back into existence for tenants that were not, not filled. Trailer house filled up.
Brent?
Okay.
Yeah.
And so we've got all of that kind of stuff happening, and we want to continue to progress and try to, you know, try to get Marion in a more positive aspect, I think, of what we're doing. Last thing I'll say on that whole issue, and I'm sure most of you read, if you haven't read Paul White's letter to the editor last week, that pretty much sums it up. I think it was spot on. Thank you.
Before you go, because I have a question.
Sure.
And I'm not trying to put you in a position of representing everybody on one side of an issue, but you're the one that's here. So I'm going to ask this. One of the things that we're going to discuss tonight is obviously that distance restriction. And the, the point of that would be basically fairness to the brick-and-mortar building, to do pay property taxes, all that, you know the arguments. And the other side of it is to protect local businesses from the, you know, transient in and out kind of thing. One way to do that, other than trying to put a limitation on where you could set something, would be to limit the number of days that a particular vendor could come to town, in a year, in a week, in a month, in a whatever. Or specify what days they're available, that are available to them, such as Sunday and Monday. That's something I'm going to throw out for discussion. Do you want to, anything more you want to say about that?
Yeah, I would say I'm all in favor of an ordinance. I think the things, again, getting back to, Paul kind of summed it up, but I think that ordinance should, you know, take care of things like, you want to charge your permit, sure, set number of days, maybe a couple of days a week, whatever, that's fine. Health, food license, insurance, those things. Personally, I think the distance thing is bogus. I think that's where you guys, this is my personal opinion, and not just because I'm involved in this, but I think we should be encouraging business any way possible. And I think setting 150-foot, or 100, or 200, you know, if it's 150-foot, for example, she can move over and park with Jean's permission on the food bank, is that going to change anything? No. And I think it's just more, that's coming from a one direction, basically, I think. And then you're going to open a whole can of worms, I think, you know, lemonade stands, can they be downtown? And then you got to get permission from, you know, Mrs. Collet, last meeting, I think it was, made the comment, she encouraged it, have another beer lady set up right out front. I think competition's good. It makes, it makes the vendor or the food establishment better, you know, and the other thing we're going to get into, if we're talking brick-and-mortar, Taco's not a brick-and-mortar.
I'm going to define him as brick-and-mortar.
It's not a brick-and-mortar, he's cooking out of a food truck.
You should be a politician, because I ask a question, and you have flipped it on me. I'm not, that's not, I'm not trying to be snotty to you, I'm impressed.
You know, you know, it's the same thing, I mean, and there's ways around, I mean, I could take, and she's in the HRK, the old gas station, I mean, is it qualified? Then I just plug her into some gas, and she's, she's good. I mean, it's the same, it's the same deal.
We'll take, we'll, I get, I know what you're talking about, I disagree, but well, that is clearly something we have to address in the ordinance.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming.
Mr. Mayor, could I just say one more thing? Brent Wright.
Does anyone else want to speak? Okay, then go ahead.
Brent Wright, they are not a brick-and-mortar, they're classified as a tavern bar on the city tax rules, on the federal county.
Aren't most tavern bars brick-and-mortar? We're not going to have this argument. We're not going to do it. You're not on the council anymore, we're not going to do it. Well, I'm sorry, but we have to make these decisions. Okay, let's move on to the 2025 budget and the issue, if I can find my paperwork, of the notice of the intent with regard to the revenue neutral rate. Just a brief explanation, when the city has a mill levy, the mill levy, each mill raises so much money, if the assessed valuation in the city goes up, then a mill makes more money than it made the year before. So you could have the mill levy at the same level and be bringing in more money because the valuation of property is higher. If the city plans, even preliminarily, to bring in more money than they did the year before, whether it's by raising the mill levy or not raising the mill levy, then they need to give notice of that. And so at this point in time, based upon the, our city administrator's recommendation, I'm going to suggest for discussion, and, well, I'm going to move, and then I'd like to have some discussion, that we give notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the upcoming 25, 2025 budget, and direct the city clerk to give notice of that to the county. That is my motion, and I would note that doing that does not mean we have to exceed the revenue neutral rate. It merely means that we are keeping open our ability to do so until we've had more time to go through the budget. So is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have motion and second. Discussion?
No discussion. I mean, I'm. I'm in favor of it, it's just that we can always say not do it, we're not saying we're doing it, we're saying we have, still keeping the option open to do it.
Right, right. That's where I'm at with it. I want to just leave our options open as long as we can. Till we have tighter budget numbers figured out.
I've talked to Janet today about budget hearing and timing it with regard to our obligations to get the budget completed. And we're looking at September 16 at 5 for our budget hearing date. And that would, we would set this at 5 on the revenue neutral issue, and then go into the budget hearing itself in the regular meeting. So, all right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to give the notice? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Janet, if you would, it can be signed by me or you, you indicated you're comfortable doing that. Go ahead and prepare that and get it over to the county, please. Thank you. And James Geng is here. We discussed how far he drove to get here. Please be nice to him, he had a long drive, from KPP.
It's all good. I apologize, Brooke can't be here today, she had an obligation up with her kids, so I told her that I could handle it, so you got the B team today. Before you, is a memo, and it's very similar to the one that we presented to you our last informational trip, but you'll see on there some blue sections where it's been updated with where we stand today. So a little brief refresher, we set out to, to build 20 megawatts of solar in nine of our cities. Two of those sites did not develop out for us, that was in Mulvane and Kingman, so therefore we're down to seven sites. We were able to maximize a few of the locations without changing footprints, so we are still going to get to around 18 megawatts installed instead of the, instead of the 20. So we're working through the final application revisions, and that has actually been submitted to USDA, where they now submit, they go through it, and then through their different committees before we get approval, and we're expecting, or we're hoping for approval by mid-August. What that approval looks like, it's basically an acceptance letter, and then that allows us to move forward with our temporary financing, and then, and start ordering parts. So under the little checklist here, I think you can see the blue items that were, that were completed, that's the environmental, the tribal, and the archaeological requirements were submitted, and we are beyond the comment periods, and everything's turned out good so far. We have recorded the easements that she provided us, and then we also worked with Margo and her team on the zoning determinations, and, and worked with the local property owners to make sure their interests were protected on that site. Let's see, the USDA application has been submitted, it's been through underwriting, so we are just waiting on those committees to meet and approve our project.
Hey, James?
Yes?
It says for the Clay Center site? Is that just a, on this front page? Project update?
Oh.
Is that just a?
That is a typo, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, that we're in the state that is under there.
Yep, I'm going to fire Brooke for that. Since she's not here. Thank you. So moving on to page two, you can see the different, the seven different sites and the different specs about those sites, if you will. And then the bottom of that has the Marion, the specs for the Marion site. You can see where we've, we've, we've kind of cheated things on the left side, if you will, to the, to the, to east, to make sure we keep that lay-down yard and that access to the properties, the properties behind there, and to the, to the west of that site open. And then also on the east side, we've moved that to the west to make sure that that road remains open, that passageway there, so we don't landlock anyone back, back through there. So those were the big things that came out of the, of the, oh, the zoning meeting, and just wanted to point out that we've made those adjustments, and we're still, still good on the site. We know we have a little drainage issues we're going to work through, and hopefully through our civil, civil work, we'll also make sure that the drainage is left better than what, what it is today on that site. On the, the last page is kind of a sample timeline. It's all depending on that notice to proceed that lap, that very top item. The sooner we get that, the sooner we can move forward, and then that'll kick off this timeline. The Marion project's probably going to be more into quarter three of 2025 before it is complete, just simply because of moving around the state and getting, or moving crews efficiently around, and probably the Hillsborough and Marion sites will happen simultaneously. And, but hopefully by quarter three of 2025, we're, we're producing energy out of all of our sites. So I'd love to take any questions you may have.
I said, the comment, same thing that we were kind of discussing before the meeting started, that although I didn't notice, that Marion and Hillsborough, of the seven sites are the only ones that had any artifacts found.
That's right, yeah.
Theirs were termed "expected insignificant," and ours were "guessing not historic."
Sorry, these are no's, so we kind of take on the fly during meetings, so maybe they don't, they mean something to us. There were some historical artifacts found, mostly foundations and stuff to do with homesteads around, no, no museum-worthy items, if you will. The, I think in Hillsborough, I think they had an, had a arrowhead that they found, so.
Any questions for James?
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Give us a heads up when you're getting ready to start doing.
Definitely. And as things progress, I, I owe you a visit every now and then to make sure that you're, you're kept aware of what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, James. Grace Faesley, thank you.
Okay, well, let's talk about the mobile food vendor ordinance, or proposed ordinance. I reached out to Heidi Gertz, and I'm, or Getz, I'm really not sure exactly how to pronounce her name, with Department, it's actually Department of Agriculture now, but was health inspector, or former title, and asked her to look over the proposed ordinance, give me any comments that, that she had. And she, and she's told me she was really busy, but she did get back to me late this afternoon. Apparently, some places in these kind of ordinances have a provision where if you set vendor hours, or hours of operation for transit vendors, that the, the mayor can, I guess, grant a variance or whatever, sign off on different business hours. I'm, I'm a no on that one.
Is that because you don't want people showing up at your?
Generally speaking, I'm a no on that. I really don't know what she means on this one. Okay, I'm going to, that one just doesn't make any sense to me. She did say that some things that we could include is to make sure they're licensed, which definitely we need and want to do, make sure they have water to wash their hands, find out where they plan to dump waste, if they're going to dump it in the city, make sure they meet state requirements. The, the requirements part is a definite, as far as washing their hands and where they plan to dump waste, certainly could be something that could be included in an application. The requirements part is a definite, as far as washing their hands and where they plan to dump waste, certainly could be something that could be included in an application form if we wish to do that. We could have our application form, ask any questions we want. So let's get then over to. The memo that I prepared addressed, I think, the things that we talked about in the previous meeting as being iffy or something we ought to take a look at. And then some other things that just occurred to me as I was working on it. Initially, under hours of operation, I thought that we probably needed to amend the current ordinance that applies to vendor, to solicitors, canvassers, and peddlers. Because they limited it 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but as I thought about that, realized that that particular clause applying to solicitors, canvassers, and peddlers is probably very appropriate. Because I don't think anybody wants somebody knocking on their door, doing a survey earlier than 8:00 or after 8:00. So with regard to the, what the city would do with food vendors, I'm proposing, I'm throwing it out here, that other than during city-approved events, and by the way, when we talk about city-approved events, that's not talking about the city cherry-picking a particular vendor for a thing. It's Art in the Park, Old Settlers Day, Chingawasada Days. Those events are separate from the, they're not separate totally, but they are operating on their own, and they have whatever vendors they have. And these particular provisions will not apply to the vendors at those particular events. But so other than those, because like Chingawasada Days, they're going to be open until the concert's done, that sort of thing. But my proposal is that we set it out to that hours of operation would be 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday. So any discussion about that? Do you like it, not like it, want to do something different, want to change it?
I like the hours you've got there. The only thing that I thought of when we were just, when you were just talking about city-approved events is we do have some kind of random times through the year where, like, if we've done a street dance in the past, right?
We have, yeah.
Like a, I think they called it Falloween last year, or Holly Jolly, some of those type of events. But quite honestly, with that 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., I really think you've almost got it covered, just serving food till 11:00 p.m. on a Friday or Saturday night. So I don't think there's a, to me, I think you've got your, we've got ourselves covered with 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. So I'm going to then assume that you're giving me an okay to have Brian go ahead on that one. Days of operation. The, my proposal is to add a new part, and this is, you know, I literally just came up with my own thoughts on this, and I would welcome you to say, well, I like this or don't like that, or change it. But mobile food vendors who have established a permanent residence within the city limits of Marion, or a 15-mile radius thereof, shall have no limitation on days of operation. Mobile food vendors residing outside of the defined area shall be limited too. So I'm going to stop there for now. I'm thinking, when I did this, of the ice cream truck that's now operating, the Hawaiian Ice business that's over by the nursery, those kind of vendors. They live in or within a 15-mile radius of Marion. Why did I say 15 miles? I feel like we need to include the county lake in anything where they're, they're more us than they are anybody else. And I thought, well, okay, then what do I do? Five miles? But you start to get north, you've got others that basically do their shopping and business down here. So I said 15. And I know that includes Hillsborough, and that was intentional. So any of those folks would be considered to be, I guess, city-approved for being, quote, "get the benefits of permanent residence." So what do you think of that?
In the previous ordinance for the peddlers and the other stuff outside of food trucks, it was talking about county residents, Marion County.
It did, that's correct.
So this is actually being a little more specific in that.
Yeah.
For good or bad, we're just pointing that out that, so that would remain the same, though, for the rest of the peddler licensing stuff.
Yes.
That wouldn't change. This would just be for the mobile, mobile food vendors.
That's right. And I don't, if you want to say reside within Marion County, I think that, I have no particular objection to that. I just, you got to make a definition. That's what I came up with.
When, go on.
So I'll just go on with, and we can talk about the thing, the whole thing. Mobile food vendors residing outside of the defined area shall be limited too. You got all kinds of options here. No more than 30 days in any calendar year, 60 days, 90 days. Or you could say no more than two days in any week with a maximum of X days in a calendar year. You could say, an option three would be that they are limited to Sundays and Mondays, as I discussed with Brent before. I really think, we, yeah, we need input from you guys on what you want to do there.
I like, this is just me, I like no more than two or three at whatever number in any week, stop. No, like, don't set a maximum on it. Set a maximum out in a given week, but don't limit it over the course of a year, then, or six months, or any, any time span. Just no more than two days per week.
Okay.
Done. That's my thought.
Other thoughts?
I, I agree with that, because then if you put a maximum on it, you know, I just, and I think also if you do the 30, 60, 90, that really doesn't give a lot of opportunity and time for people to come.
The 60, 90, 30 would be very restrictive, but the 60 and 90 are pretty consistent with other ordinances that I've looked at. And I, I mean, that's up to the individual city clearly, but. If you did two days in a week, do you have any desire to say what days it should be, or you just want to say two days and let it go?
My preference would just be two days. Not limited to days of the week.
Yeah, I don't like limiting certain days.
When we come to the discussion of the distance, the earlier proposal for the ordinance said no more than, has to be at least, what, 150 feet away? And the argument that was given for that was that to protect local businesses who pay property tax and who you assume are paying their sales tax, blah, blah, blah. I think that if you're, if you're concerned about that, and you want to give some protection to your local resident merchants, that you do that more by limiting the days of the week. Not specific days, but limiting the amount of time they can come here than you do by saying where they have to set up.
I guess this was just a thought I just had in terms of days of the week. If we want to try and limit, say, something about no more than two or three, or whatever the number is, days a week, with only one of those days being a Friday or Saturday. So that somebody, right, if we set it at two days a week, somebody's not coming in and setting up Friday night and Saturday night, which are obviously the two.
Primetime.
Bigger nights. See, you're right. Whether they want to choose Friday night or Saturday night, up to them, or none of those nights. Or maybe not limited at all. It was just a thought that I had of a way to.
So mobile food vendors residing outside of the defined area shall be limited to no more than two days in any week, with only one of those days being a Friday or Saturday.
Is that then set in stone, or can that then be changed? Can they say, well, this week I want to come on Monday, let's just say Monday, Tuesday, and then next week I want to come Wednesday, Thursday?
I would interpret that to say that if I want to come on Monday, Tuesday, I can come on Monday, Tuesday. And then if the next week I decide I want to come Monday, Saturday, then those are my two days. But you can't come on Saturday, Sunday, I mean, excuse me, Friday, Saturday. Which, I get the logic of that, but I have no problem with that. And keep in mind, what we're going to do here, if we can agree on some, on basic language, it's all going to go to the city attorney, who will then massage it into the proposed ordinance that will then become a part of the ordinance we already have.
So then with regards to the other business operating hours, will that still, and we haven't got, that's further on down, it wasn't in this, but where you wouldn't contradict with other, what did I say, established business hours, published business hours? That's only then for the peddlers, not for the food ordinance?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So that there wouldn't be any, any wording in there for that in that regard to conflicts with brick-and-mortar business hours?
That was, and obviously, we'll have to take a, this has been of enough interest to people that we're going to have to look very carefully at the work product when Brian gets it back to us. But that's certainly what I would want to have in, yeah.
Just clarifying, that's what we're saying there.
Yeah.
But it was kind of like Brent said, you know, when they first chose those days, they chose Sunday and Monday, because that's typically when restaurants weren't open. But then if all of a sudden the local, you, you limit, or say that it's going to be those days, and then the local restaurants change their hours, and then they're open those days, then you've kind of shot yourself in the foot on that, to an extent. I mean, because now, I mean, when it first came about, I don't think Bill and Essies was really open, or at least eating. Well, now they're open on Sundays. So, you know, I think, I kind of like the, like you said, the Friday, Saturday, you can't come both of those days. But I think to try and pick more specific days is just going to be kind of chasing your tail. Because if some, you know, if somebody else changes something, then, then you've got them in here on a day when they're open. And I just think that'd be a little hard, hard to stay ahead of.
So what I'm hearing is that you like what Zach proposed. No more than two days in any week with only, with only one of those days being a Friday or a Saturday. Can't come, your two days can't be Friday, Saturday. Okay, can I put an okay by that?
And do we want to also, your, did we already okay the radius?
No, we didn't. We got to go back to that. Thank you. I got ahead of my, but I'm going to do, I'm going to strike while the iron is hot here, and got to grimace on something. So what do you think? How do you want, how do you want to define, or how do you want to deal with the, to protect the people who are local residents and who have permanent truck locations? And the main one of that would obviously be the snow cone place.
I think I'm fine with the 15-mile. I mean, I understand Tim's argument too of the Marion County, or that that was in there previously.
Yeah, I wasn't arguing it should be Marion County, I'm just saying that's what it is for the rest of the ordinance.
You'd probably go one way or the other, either way.
And if you want, I mean, if you want to be consistent, you could do that. You could say Marion County, and it would be consistent with what we are and everything else. There's logic in that. Amy?
No, I, I agree with the 15-mile radius.
Do, if, if we do, and again, if we want to try to be consistent in how we treat mobile food vendors and, I laugh every time, you know, peddlers, canvassers, and solicitors, I don't know, the Fuller Brush Man hadn't been by my house for a while, but would we want to change the definition or the wording in the current ordinance regarding those things to be consistent with what we're doing on the food vendors?
Kind of depends what the wording was on those. I didn't really propose it.
Yeah.
In those situations, but.
I've got it here.
Didn't apply.
Can we? I've got all my papers messed up, and I can't find my order.
Did we check, mark the 15-mile thing and move on?
No.
So it'd be.
Go ahead. This is what I was actually just going to bring up. I just put in.
Probably have to be close.
But just here, this is just a map that I just pulled up, where you can set a radius and pinpoint it. If we go to a 20-mile radius around Marion, that would now include all the way up to Tampa and include Peabody and Florence in that as well.
Okay.
So we would catch, and even Burns.
At 20 miles.
At 20 miles. With Gossel being right on the edge. So whether we.
Obviously, I, my proposal favored some Marion County residents, probably a large number of them, percentage of them, if you include Marion and Hillsborough and whatever. But I have no problem with favoring Marion County residents. Clearly, the original ordinance did that. So if you want to, just make it that simple.
Yeah. My opinion, well, you just go Marion, because you can go to 20 miles, and you're catching basically every community that we have in town. Or in, sorry, every community that we have in the county, or we can just go to Marion County and.
Okay, so.
Then you don't have to measure when they apply. Where you're measuring from, what part of town you're measuring from.
Okay, so we will then, the, those who have established permanent residents within the city limits of Marion, City of Marion, or Marion County.
I already know that we need the city, right? We could just say within.
Let me, it'll get cleaned up.
Okay.
Just bear with me, okay? So have no limitation on days of operation. Are we all okay with that? Is that an okay from you?
Well.
You're thinking.
I am thinking.
Okay.
Come back to me.
Well, I'm moving on.
Okay, well, move on. I can always go back to you.
Well, no, you can't. Again.
I mean, so there's going to be no limitations on days of the week that they can come then?
Or amount of time.
To the, other than they can't come Friday and Saturday. They have to pick one or the other.
I don't think so. I think the way we got it worded, I would interpret that as they are not, they do not, they don't fall under whatever option, right, the second option.
Who doesn't?
The Marion County residents.
Oh, right, right. Well, that's, yeah, Marion County doesn't, correct.
They could be here on a Friday and Saturday if they wanted.
He just said that backwards, was all.
Yeah, that's why I guess it was.
We said day, I thought you meant food trucks. I guess you did, but I thought you meant the, what we're calling transient food truck. That was a word that got used a lot in that first meeting by a local business owner.
I mean, you can call it whatever you want to call it.
Well, I'm calling it one that lives outside of whatever boundary we establish.
Right.
I hear a saying, we want to establish the county line as the boundary.
Yeah.
You're cool with that?
Okay.
Okay, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Then D, work on the definition of mobile food unit in section one of the new ordinance. The, I mean, we've got people, and it kind of seems to depend on what side of the argument you want to fall on, whether you're calling it brick-and-mortar or not brick-and-mortar. But if you have someone who comes to town, buys a lot, permanently locates things on it, builds a building that is connected to gas, electricity, and sewer, and everything else, I don't know how you cannot call that a permanently-located business under the general generic term of brick-and-mortar. And that's my take on it. If you guys disagree, I'll be glad to hear you out.
It, I mean, it states on there that, I think I've, I've seen a lot of people argue brick and mortar. And it states on there that if you're making a transaction and picking up a product in that, in that location, then it refers to brick and mortar. So if they're going in there and they're paying for food, and then they're picking up the food from that building, then that refers to it as brick and mortar. I mean, as simple as that.
Does it matter that much? If, I mean, with the Marion County thing?
I, well. I, well, that's a good point. That's a very good point, with it saying...
Regardless of what they're classified as, they're not restricted on days.
However, it would, it would change it if it comes down to distance restrictions, whether it's defined as brick and mortar or a mobile food unit. That's more the issue that would, yeah.
Well, that's on the next page.
Which we're getting to, so.
That's on the next page, I'm, okay, we can, I'll come back to that one. The next one is the, on page two, movement required, section two of the proposed ordinance. That was the one that limited a mobile food unit to ten hours, and they specifically located, Ms. Herbl spoke to that. I don't, I don't think it does much. But I, as I said in my, that may be solving a problem that doesn't exist. I mean, we've got limits, limits on hours they can be open. If they're going to come to town and be here on Tuesday and Wednesday, I don't expect them to have to move the unit Tuesday night before they open back up again Wednesday morning. So I, I would like to just strike that. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I agree with you. I think that'd make more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I agree, I think it's just kind of...
So I can do, I get an okay on striking it?
Unless there's like some larger number, larger time, like you can't be there for more than six months or something, leave it parked there year round.
Well, yeah, well, that would be issues with that.
But I think, I think less restriction is better on that than more. I'm, I'm good with taking it out.
Okay, next, paragraph F in my memo, distance from restaurants, which is section two of the proposed ordinance, A, locations, sub two. That, I, my thoughts are, we either just eliminate that clause, the hundred and fifty foot radius, retain it as it is, change it to, because we've been asked to do that, to determine is that property line to property line, you know, whatever, retain it and change it to say that it's door to door, or back door to back door, or do whatever you want to do. Or my suggestion is that we change it to say, no mobile food vendor may vend on public or private property in a location that blocks or obstructs the public entrance or parking area of an existing. And if we wanted to take out brick and mortar, and just say restaurant, I guess we could, unless the mobile food truck vendor has written permission from the restaurant owner and maintains a record of such permission in its unit for inspection. Basically, what we're saying there is, you can't pull up in front of Rachel, since that came up earlier, and start selling beer ox, unless you've got her permission to do so. You can do it across the street, you can do it, you know, few feet down, but you can't block the view of her business or her front door, or her parking.
I'm kind of torn on this one, because I feel that, you know, yes, competition is great, but then if you're, you know, right next door, we don't have a big enough town to support a lot of competition hearsay. But if, if we're putting in place, you know, distance, is it going to make a big difference if it's a hundred and fifty feet, and then they just move it ten more feet to make it a hundred and sixty feet? It's going to be there in distance and in view, you know, whether...
As I, I kind of struggled with this, and what it came down to was, yes, I, well, I don't, I don't like the fact that, and I've talked to Brian about this, I totally believe him when a hundred and fifty feet was just the distance he saw in some other ordinance. But when you look at the actual, I don't know quite what to call it, but issue we have with the food truck that's been coming to town and locating over by that one place, it's about a hundred and fifty feet, I would guess, just eyeballing it. And it makes it look like it's, it's really getting into a personal thing here, and the council's going to take the side of one of the parties out over the other party. But the more I thought about it, is what's the point of that saying that you're not supposed to be that close? It's just basically to give a little bit, I guess, protection to the permanent business by not having them right there pulling away. Well, you do that by saying you can't come more than a couple of days a week, and we've already said we're going to do that. I would think that would have more impact than saying, you know, you, you have to be more than a hundred and fifty feet away.
Well, I think, well, the original hundred and fifty feet came as back when there were peddlers and other issues, when they weren't going to pull up in front of the department store with jeans and sell jeans at half price in front of the store that's selling jeans to make a living. Probably that to get the distance of that actual transaction.
Could be.
More so than addressing a food truck and a food truck. That's where I think it originally probably came from, more that side of things than the way we're looking at it today, with the exact hundred and fifty number there.
So my recommendation is to do away with that provision, but...
Eliminate it entirely, or use what you have down there in option six?
To do away with the setting a distance. I would prefer, I think it's logical to say that you can't just locate yourself in a way that blocks access to another business without, without permission.
Yeah, I like your modification that you have down there.
Maybe we should have two options that can be voted on. They're down, so we can't get it perfect.
Well, that...
But yes, I, you know?
Somebody give me what, the other, if Zach likes the one I proposed, that's, what's the other option?
So I have a question. So if, if we said if you live within the county and you own the truck, then you have no limitations on the days, so then does that also, if you're within the county, if you do set a distance limit, does that also negate the distance limit? Or is that just the days of operation?
That might, it was not my intention to say that you had carte blanche to do any damn thing you want.
No, that's what, but...
Yeah, no, I'm answering your, I'm being serious, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think it basically, the days of operation and the county thing was simply saying, if you live in the county and you've got a place set up here, what that would basically do, it would allow the Salisbury's who have the, I think, that's their name, that have the Hawaiian eyes, shaved eyes, to move to Hillsborough and live if they wanted to, and still have their place over here.
Got you.
I shouldn't have said it that way, should I?
Hope they don't.
I hope they don't either. Okay, to move to Lincolnville.
Or just not move at all, yeah. I think we have the days of the week, you know, the, the limitation on the days in place, I think, that's about as good as...
Yeah. But option six that you had there, I think, I like that too, though.
Should we, should we have on there, not have it in residential? Because I've seen other, I know that sounds silly, but other ordinance, you know, saying you can't, I mean, I think it's common sense, but not park in a...
Residential area?
Yeah.
I think... Hang on. Well, if he's going, if they're going to set up in a, on city property, we obviously would have the ability to say no to anything that would block traffic or anything of that nature. If they're going to set up on private property, I don't, give me an example of when that would be a problem, if they're setting up on private property.
I mean...
Margot, you've got something to say there?
I don't want to hear. Go ahead, Margot.
It could be an ice cream truck at a birthday party.
What profit birthday party?
And, and the question was, what's the problem with that?
I don't have one.
Residential.
I'm just saying that's an example of a resident.
Right.
Was that the question?
It's the answer. Well, that was kind of what I, yeah, said.
Because I'm, I'm still dealing with, we were, we were talking about the residence of the food truck operator. You switched on me?
I'm, well, I'm sorry, yeah, I kind of was going back.
Okay.
Yeah.
So your concern is...
Well, I was just talking about number, option six, that, you know, we like that, but I mean, also maybe make note that, I guess if nobody agrees to it, that you shouldn't set up, I guess, in a residential? Because I've seen other ordinance with that listed on there. I guess if it's a birthday party ice cream truck, Margot, which we need one.
Well, I think what we would do there, to me, that we probably just need to add another clause or another provision in our, in our ordinance that would prohibit setting them up in residential areas, if that's what we want to do. Yeah, that's fine. This is not a peddler. Oh, you're talking, yeah. They go up and down the, yeah.
They don't have a location, it's continually mobile.
Yeah, but that's, yeah.
But they would still have to have a per, a permit. Can we pass, table that? Don't throw other problems at me when we haven't solved the problem we're talking about.
Sorry.
And, and I will, we'll give some more thought to that.
Okay.
Okay, so let's talk about part F. We've got myself and Tim that like option six. If, if somebody wants to go another way, that's great, tell me, give me an idea. What?
I like it.
Okay. But...
No, I don't have a thought, I was just suggesting.
I'm good with option six.
Kevin?
Let me finish, I don't think I'm good. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, so I'm going to go with six and give that an okay. Signage. Tim brought this up at the last time we talked about it, section two of the proposed ordinance, part C. And I read it, and the more I read it, the more I thought, well, it's probably okay. You know, it basically had a whole lot of explanation about A-frame sign, and how big it could be, and all that sort of thing. And then, you know, those actually are called feather signs? When you brought that up, did you know that?
Yes, I knew that.
Oh. I did not know that.
I'm, I'm sorry to surprise you that I know anything.
Well, I, I Googled feather signs, and boom, there they were. I didn't know that was their name. But I, I just arbitrarily said you can't have more than two of them. I mean, if you guys want to limit it to one, prohibit them all together, or say they can have as many as they want. But I think you say you can't, either you can't have them, or you can't have more than this number, and then you got, they got to comply with the same things as the A-frame signs, which had all to do with, you don't stick it in the middle of the sidewalk, trip people, and so on. Is he, are you okay?
I like it.
Kevin?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'm giving it, giving G an okay. Uh, accessory structures. It, there was a lot there. And that, well, you know, basically, didn't want you to do anything, you couldn't have tables, chairs, blah, 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 blah. I think we either ought to just say you can't have more than two tables and eight chairs, and the tables can't be bigger than, you know, four by six, or something like that. Or, and what I really recommend is just saying, any tables or chairs associated with the mobile food, food unit must be positioned so they do not interfere with vehicle access, pedestrian movement, or handicapped accessible routes to and for around the unit.
I like that.
I like that. Would they also be required to take them down after...
During operating hours?
I mean, just have them up during operating only?
I like that.
Blowing around outside of the...
Yeah, sitting there.
Yeah.
If they're not attached.
Okay, we'll modify that to add operating hours, only during operating hours. So with that change, is anyone, is everyone okay with that?
Well... So like, those food trucks that will not be mobile, those that live in the Marion County, their unit can remain in its location. If they have something there, they would have to take it down every day, unless it was attached.
The snow cone place has a picnic.
That's why I had said unless it was attached, you know, or secured, just so it's not... My, my biggest concern is just so they're not blowing around when they're unsupervised, or that they're, I don't know. I don't know how to say that or word that, but that was my main concern, is so that it's, if it's not an attached structure, that it's secured.
Okay, let me...
Think about that.
Yeah, we'll...
But for the most part, I'm in favor of having tables and chairs.
He just threw that back on you real fast.
Up to that.
He said, he goes, you just think on that, he threw it back on you real fast.
Well, I'm going to give it to Beena. So I like that, that's, that's a very good point. So incorporating that, a way to deal with that concern, otherwise are we okay with saying you can have tables and chairs, you just have to comply with the rest of the ordinance on where you put them, so they don't?
Yep.
Kevin? Uh, and then I'm suggesting that we add a, a new part to the ordinance to obtain a mobile food vendor permit, the applicant must provide proof that the business has a minimum of a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, whatever number you want, commercial, general liability insurance covering their premises, operations, products, and, and personal injury, and also that applicants, God, I can't talk, must provide proof they have a valid Kansas sales tax license, and a valid Kansas food service permit, and an inspection review. Those are all things that I think they're supposed to have, but we just will make sure that they provide proof of that. What? Valid Kansas sales tax license.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Zach?
Yep, I like it.
Okay, so that's an okay?
Do we need to set the number?
Yes, oh, yeah, you do.
That's a hundred.
I will tell you that Brian recommended two hundred thousand. I know, because I just happened to get their form early on in this, the Council Grove requires one hundred thousand. And I don't know, I have no idea what, how much it costs, and what's the difference in getting a hundred thousand dollars of that coverage, or two hundred thousand dollars? Does it make it, I don't suppose you'd have any idea, yeah?
I don't think it's that expensive. I'm pretty sure that ours was like a million dollars. I think we had a million dollar liability policy.
I have a copy.
I'm not saying that we need that amount, I'm just saying I don't, I don't think it's all that expensive for a hundred thousand dollars in general liability insurance, or two hundred thousand. I don't think there's going to be that big of a difference in price.
And this is not a shot, but I would expect it to be higher if you sell alcohol.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Hillsborough's is five hundred thousand.
Is it? Is that their new ordinance?
But I don't know that it really needs to. I had written, I had written two hundred thousand down.
I agree with two hundred.
Two, two?
I'd be fine with... Two was good for me.
I'd be fine with two.
Okay, we'll go with two thou, two hundred thousand. Okay. Other thoughts on that? What, what I'm anticipating?
I do.
Okay.
The fee schedule, everything remained the same on that, because this doesn't address any of the fee schedule.
The...
Which is fine if we don't know that yet, but I was just...
I was going to, and we could do it either way. We could set up our own, but if you look at the current ordinance, here. I don't know how I got this all prepared and got here without that.
I've got it pulled up here, it says...
It's ten dollars a day.
Not to exceed a hundred dollars in any six month period, so you're talking about...
Did it pay ten bucks or a hundred bucks?
No, ten bucks, or, well, you pay a hundred bucks for six months.
You're good for six months, is what I'm saying.
Or two hundred dollars for a year. Which, two hundred dollars over a year, that seems steep to me, but... Because I think our, I'd have to go back and, do you know what our business licenses cost in town, Janet? I would be fine if it was a hundred dollars over the, like, for a year, you could pay a hundred dollars over a year.
What if you just want to come for a day?
I think the way that it's, if it were me, and I don't know how, right, ten dollars per day, not to exceed a hundred dollars in one year. So you can come in and pay for a hundred, pay a hundred dollars, and you're good for a year? Or if you want to come for a day, you pay ten bucks. Or three days, you pay thirty bucks.
If that's what that means. But if, ten dollars... But if, 10 dollars a day, not to exceed 100 dollars in any given year, does that mean you're, you're limited to 10 days?
I don't think so. That's not the way I would interpret it, but I'm not an attorney, so my reading of it probably doesn't say anything.
Um, I'm a mediator, Zach.
Now, in addition to that, does the fee schedule remain the same if you are resident of Marion County?
That was my question, actually.
Which if it's only 100, that's, that's not anything. $10 a day, 100 isn't big, but... Just to think about.
Well, I do think if you're gonna run a food truck, we can't, I think we need to require that even the local residents pay the permit fee. And have the insurance and comply with all those other things. And I, if, if you're gonna say 100 for a year, I, that doesn't seem unrealistic to me. Amy?
I mean, I think that's fair.
I like, yeah, I like 100 a year, or I like to give the option of the $10 a day or 100 a year.
200 a year was too much, then?
But I like giving somebody the option that if they just wanna come, if it's a new food truck and they wanna come, see, yup, see what it is, they have the option to just pay a daily fee. And then, and I don't know how it would all have to get worded, but that that $10, if they decide, okay, now I wanna buy the full year fee, the $10 gets credited to their 100 dollar...
Well, that's where it says not to exceed 100 dollars in a year, so then it would be 100 dollars to have to address that. That's why I sorted that one.
Yeah.
So I, somebody said 200, is, is 200 too much? You thought so, right?
I think so, yeah, I like 100.
I would be more in favor of 200, but I mean, that's not really a big deal, back and forth.
150 dollars.
But if you're only open for the summer...
That's a mediator right there.
If you're only open for the summer for three months, then it's a big difference than if you're here all year.
Sure.
So, that's why the six-month option was always nice. Not many people open in the middle of dead, middle winter.
Right. How, how many, give me a show of hands, how many prefer something more than 100?
Per year?
Yeah.
I, I like the, I like the 100 at six months, $10 a day and 100 for six months. Cause I don't think overall if they come that many days, that that's that significant.
Well, that would cover the seasonal ones. You wanna do that?
So in other words, it would stay the same.
Sleep pad is?
Yeah.
Cause then if you're here for a year, you do that twice and you're at 200.
Right.
So it wouldn't change.
I agree with keeping it the same.
If we changed it, we'd actually be dropping the price per year, you know?
Well, but someone could choose to get one six-month permit for 100 dollars.
Yep.
And if they choose to get two, well, it's gonna cost them 200 dollars, yeah.
Yeah, here for a year.
We all go with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The only, I will have one more thing on it.
Okay.
Cause I ran into this when we were doing, and again, a little different, but those fees start to add up. Every time you're going to a different town, you have to purchase a, now, if you're going for a day, okay, it's 10 bucks, right? But if you're, right, you, you, you could be talking about 7, 800 dollars in a six-month period. Now, that doesn't necessarily...
If you're going to more than one town.
Yes, that doesn't, I understand that doesn't necessarily concern us. I guess I'm saying, are we keeping, are we keeping food trucks away if we have it too high, right? And they've already got three communities that they're paying 150, 200 dollars? And they go, well, I don't wanna pay another one, so I'm just not gonna go there.
But wouldn't they just buy, wouldn't they just buy the $10 permit and, you know, come once a week or whatever and...
Yes, they could, they would have that option, yeah.
And then they, they were in bad weather, they don't have to come and so on.
Just bringing up a, a point from the other...
Well, that's fine, yeah, we gotta discuss.
Other side of it.
Well, so, does that change anybody's mind on the fee thing? Okay, well then, I'm gonna get this to Brian and have him put together a proposal that will be hopefully, well, I'm not gonna lock it. We're gonna get it to Brian and have him get it to us as soon as possible. And when he gets it to us, we will get it on the agenda for the next meeting that we have. Uh, at that point in time, it could be acted on or it could simply be discussed and further amended if you wished. Okay? You mean okay?
Okay.
Yes, good.
All right. At this time, um, I am going to move that we go into executive session. Uh, it will be to discuss a personnel matter, non-elected personnel, uh, to protect the privacy rights of a staff member. Would ask, then my motion will be that the city clerk be included with the city council for the executive session. Let's do it for 15 minutes. I don't think we need 20 minutes, let's do it for 15 minutes, so we'll reconvene at 6:31. Um, is there a second to that motion?
Second, that.
Home favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, folks, the upstairs, old city council room is open, the air conditioner's on. It's, uh, 31 minutes past the hour and we will come back into session.
Mics.
What?
Mics.
He wasn't saying your name, he was saying the device.
Put your mics on.
My mic is on. And we have no further items on the agenda in terms of council discussion or action, we have...
Mike, you have to say no action taken.
I said that.
You did?
Yes.
Oh, well, I wasn't listening, I'm sorry, sorry.
These people are bugging me.
I'm sorry.
Um, next item then will be public forum for anyone who wants to talk about anything.
I think we discussed it all, I think.
All right, no one, uh, seems to wanna talk about that. Let's talk about council, department, and staff reports, Margot?
It's all good.
I'm gonna bet money that Zach has something to talk about.
Uh, just one thing, that, that's been, we completed the academy on the 28th. Cause then field training right now, hopefully be out by the end of the month.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is fair, but I really do want to acknowledge, uh, city employees' accomplishments. Could you take a picture of him and, and get it to Sandy and so we can just put a little blurb on our website and, you know, and on Facebook, if you're willing to be associated with him.
Do it now.
Thank you, anything else? Okay, thank you. Janet?
No.
Nothing? Tim?
Well, just going off that with employees that were, which I, my, no one can answer my question, but I was gonna ask about, uh, we had several line workers that went through some apprentice training, I'm assuming paper or something, so I just was gonna question them on their, what they got accomplished, but they weren't here tonight, so.
Yeah.
But I didn't have anything beyond that to...
Okay. Kevin?
I don't have anything.
Amy?
Did you skip, no?
I did.
I was coming to the end of the table.
Oh.
We worked to the middle.
Oh, I see. Um, I've been going to the Marion...
His nibs has to be last.
I've been going to the Marion merchant meetings and I just have to give all of those guys so much credit of all the events that are planned, you know, kinda behind closed doors and you don't realize how much work these people put into all of these events for our community. Um, just the ideas that they have and, and the, the hours and the manpower that they, they provide for this community is just phenomenal. I can't give these people enough credit.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I don't have anything, nothing?
I did have one more thing I'd...
Okay.
Yeah, uh, the, Kudos out to the library too, they had a big, a good event the other day where they had the fire truck came out Smokey the Bear's 80th birthday party and stuff for the kids and it, it was a good time and, uh, thanks to the fire, the volunteers, the fire department that came out there that day entertained the kids and soaked them down, it was really hot, so.
Smokey the Bear's 80?
Yeah.
How's that make you feel?
It could be precedent. Yeah, how's that make me feel? I did not know he was a young man when I was a kid. Um, couple of things, I, I, with regard to the Locust Street Drainage Ditch Project, I checked on that. I mean, we all know it's gonna happen, uh, but didn't know why it hadn't, we weren't seeing anything. EBH is working up the bid information and there's some question about the, can't find the note, but there's some question about the design of the, the end plate or something of something. And bottom line is that Darren reached out to some other parties for, um, input on the best way to do it and, but it's, it's not out for bid yet, but as soon as he gets that, then he will, he will put it out for bid. And then, we had, um, last week, they got started on the, um, moderate income housing project over on Cobal Street. But they got started by going into the front yards of two people on the west side of Cobal early in the morning and digging big holes in their yards. Um, and they were not given any prior notice of it or, you know, heads up or, or anything. And they weren't happy and I don't blame them for not being happy. Um, I talked to Kristen Wiwi from Lang Real Estate. Uh, we played a lot of phone tag, but eventually we did get together and she was, um, apologetic. She was not happy with, there was a subcontractor of theirs, it was their, their, their boring operator. When she first said, I thought she was saying he was boring.
Yeah, they're not very exciting.
Apparently he's boring, uh, under the road, um, and...
I'm trying to think what for, though.
To access water lines, I thought. I know, I thought the same thing, aren't they already there?
Well, that, yeah, I thought that we set...
It was like, see, that they were going under the road and putting like meter pits on the other side.
That's what the...
Meter pits should, there's some, we may wanna get Darren involved there because the pits should sit on the side of the home, the side of the street that the home is on.
Yeah.
And I thought we had done some of those already, that some of those were in already.
On the south part of that line down there? I don't know, I, I know this. She was apologetic, she said it won't happen again. I, I asked questions, I said, did we know? Did Marion's staff know? Because if we knew, then we should've said, you know, are you gonna notify those people? Or we should've notified those people. But no, we did not know, we had no knowledge of it. As a matter of fact, Kristen didn't have any knowledge of it. She said that their subcontractor had jumped the gun on them and she would make sure that didn't happen again. So I, I do think we owe an apology to the folks whose yards were dug up. Although I, my understanding is that once they knew what was going on, they were decent about it, nice about it, but, so. That's all I've got, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn, please.
Is there a second? Thank you, motion and second, home favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, we are adjourned.